Call to order. City Commission meeting of February 4th, 2020. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Yes, President Decker. There are just a couple of minor ones. Under Administration and Finance, both of these will be on who's presenting. Three, see Board of Equalization date. Deputy City Administrator Carlson will take that one. And then, under Public Safety, Parking Ordinance Amendment, I will take that one.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gah on changes to the Order of Business? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. The Order of Business is amended.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the amended Order of Business. State aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Commissioners, the next item up is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing no questions on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll go right into our normal agenda. First item up is our Administration, Finance. And we have nonutility accounts receivable, and this will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you, in your packet, you received a four pages. One is the memo to the mayor and the city commissioners with the city administrator. And this memo explains that we are going to do the first city write-off of accounts receivables that have been on our books for quite a long time. They have gone through a process of collections, which we have a third-party agency that is out there. And then with this process, I have written up a general accounts receivable policy, which I will be presenting to you on the next Commission meeting to solidify that we do everything that we're supposed to be doing when we're looking at these accounts. The second one is uncollectible accounts receivable discharge. It's a summary table. What this is, is telling us under what categories that we have these collections that have exhausted efforts by the city staff and by our third-party agency, that we just cannot collect these any longer. But I wanted to emphasize a little bit more on this, that the nonutility accounts receivable in the collection efforts exhausted section consists largely of the following services. So this is that $42,000. Risk management claims consisting of accidents, which totaled about $41,117. This is accidents that have happened to either city property or equipment or things that have happened that the insurance has paid, but the individual has not been able to be collected from or set up arrangements or anything like that. The second part of it is damage to city property, and that's like our stop signs, things like that. That's $1,203.50. And then a utility permit of $500 that was not collectible. And then you can see in the other ones, the mechanical permits, water vendor refuse collection, and burglar alarms of what is out there. So our total that we are looking at for write-off of our accounts receivable assets would be You have a detailed list, as your third page is listing by the account holder, and you can see that they are from 2014 through 17. So we've had them for at least three years of trying to collect, and the collection efforts are exhausted on some of these. Some have been from way back when people that were in town have left. We just can't find them, and neither can the skip tracing of our collection agency. The fourth page that you received is the current uncollected debt that the city has that is in our third-party collection, just so that you can see what is still outstanding and where they're at. And this will be added to our financial report also when we give the 92, excuse me, the over 120 days of what's in their uncollectibles, so that you have a current monthly report on that. So with that all being said, I am asking for approval, a consideration to approve the write-off discharge of $43,410.58 of uncollectible accounts receivable balances aged between the dates of October 2014 through December of 2017. And I stand for any questions you may have on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mr. Carlson?
Just a couple. Couple of these are operating businesses. Why aren't they?
Are you looking at the?
Burger King and?
Those are our current ones. That's our currents that have not paid on that.
But they've owed $100 since 2018?
That was an alarm, where an alarm has gone off and they just have not, they've disputed the payments.
Family Dollar?
Same thing. And you can tell by the status code where some of these are. And we have had some paid in full, that since we've done working with our third-party collection agency, we have had some paid, and some are on payment plans.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson?
The McKenzie Larson, was that a vehicle accident? Or was that $31,000? That's the big one.
Yes, that was a big accident, one where.
She was uninsured at most?
Correct. And there's just no, the skip trace shows nowhere. So policies, that's why a policy is being written up, so we have better information that we can give collection companies, so that they have some opportunity to be able to collect.
Okay. Thanks, Gah.
Any other questions? I would look for a motion on the nonutility accounts receivable with consideration for our finance department to write off this uncollectible debt.
Move to approve.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
This next item up is an item that we tabled from the last meeting. This is the Phase Two Event Center Agreement. And City Administrator Gah, you'll be presenting.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Just to recap, this was tabled from the last time. A little summary, in June of 2019, the Commission entered into an agreement with CSL to conduct an Event Center feasibility study. And it was divided into two phases. Phase one was a lot of the backgrounding and looking at markets and potential sites and partnerships, and really just evaluating the community. Phase two would be to look at, you have somewhat of a market, but what would we recommend you build based on the need, and what would that cost to construct and operate? So really, the numbers that would be needed moving forward at any point in time in the future. If we don't do it now, we'd have to come back later if the idea did get some groundwork. The first phase was $34,500. The second phase is for $15,000, and that would complete the study.
Mr. Gah, we, I know we had some locations originally, I guess, selected, and some have since been eliminated. So would this point us to an area that would be preferable, the second phase?
I think what it would do for sure is it would say, this is how many acres you need for what we propose. And so if you see a site that you feel is a good site, that size, and something that would be perhaps purchased in the future, it doesn't necessarily say this is where your event center has to be built. It says this is the amount of land mass you need.
Any other questions for Mr. Gah? What Mr. Gah is asking for is for us to approve the Phase Two and go forward and complete the RFP on an event center.
And we budgeted this, for this in 2019, correct?
Correct.
And this does not exceed the amount budgeted?
No, the amount budgeted was $50,000, so we're $500 under budget.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Gah? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the Phase Two Event Center Agreement.
Just some comments. I mean, we've gone halfway through this. I mean, I don't know if it's something that we're going to build in the next year or five years, but I guess I'd like to see the completion of the study to see some costs and.
And what.
Operating costs and size, so. With that said, I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is the, set the Board of Equalization date. And I think this was something we may have tabled also, because we were lacking commissioners last meeting. So this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The Board of Equalization meeting date, the memo that you received says, states that the North Dakota Center Code has been updated with the new law that requires that the local jurisdiction hold the Board of Equalization meeting within the first 15 days of April, and that the county auditor post that date by the first day of March. So what I'm looking for is a date in the first 15 days of April. I do want to bring to your attention, April 7th is a Commission meeting date. Good Friday is on April 10th, and Thursdays, we have court in here.
April 7th would work for me.
Mr. President, I will be out of town for a conference, April 6 through the 10th.
Six through the 10th. I don't know if we can necessarily run it with a regular Commission meeting. They get really long. I mean, so.
I could make a suggestion of April 14th.
Which is the following Tuesday?
Right. Most schools are closed on Monday, the 13th, that's Easter Monday, but 14th would be in between your Commission meetings.
That's right, at the end, so. I'm open to the 14th if it works for everyone.
I can make that work.
And then the time that you would like, because it is a public hearing. As long as we post it, we can start at any time.
That'd be April 14th?
Fourteenth.
I will mention, that's the spring workshop for the North Dakota League of Cities that typically you and I attend.
You're correct. I didn't look at that.
Well, we can.
It's a Wednesday.
No, that's.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, it's Tuesday, Wednesday.
I believe it's pretty thin.
What about April 8th?
That's your goal.
Yeah, I was looking.
Oh.
If I could do it.
The 8th works, if you're here. Or just have back-to-back meetings, 7th and 8th, so. But, I mean, I'm fine with the 8th also, it's just what time would you, as Commissioners, because typically we've, it has gone long. So do we want a 2:00 starting time, or?
Can we do morning, or?
You can do morning.
I would rather do it in the morning.
You'd rather do morning?
9:00 AM? I would rather do it.
Okay, the 8th, 9:00 AM?
Maybe by noon, everybody will get hungry. Stop.
Doubt it.
He won't bring food in.
So do you need a, we just need to set the date, we don't need a motion?
We need to just set the date.
Okay, we don't need a motion.
I know that a few of you have said, okay, to that date, is everybody okay?
9:00 AM work for everyone? Okay, we got nods all the way down this way, too, so.
Okay, thank you for, April 8th at 9:00 AM.
Moving on to Public Safety, we have a Police Department Parking Ordinance Amendment, and I think.
I'm going to take that one.
You're going to take it, okay. Yep. That was the amendment, so. Go ahead, Mr. Gah.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is a follow-up, really, from a work session. We were kind of ahead of this at one point of time, ahead of snow removal, and then we had kind of a quickly winter, and it snowed a couple times, and now it hasn't really snowed much, so we've forgotten about this. But it has to do with parking of vehicles on the street. Our ordinance currently says, has limitations to motorized vehicles, but it doesn't talk about things that might not be motorized, like, for example, a boat on a trailer, or a utility trailer, or a camper, a pull-by camper. Sometimes we even see an RV, a motorized type of camper on the street, and they don't move for all months, for months at a time, and it makes it real difficult for adequate snow removal. So this would set forth to add a clause that would limit those types of parking on the street between November 15th and March 31st. So most of those types of recreational vehicles, it would be out of season, so it would provide for them to need adequate storage, not on the streets, and then match up with the same requirements as vehicle parking. And this would just be the first reading of the ordinance. We would have a, bring it back for the second reading, a public hearing at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on this update to our ordinance? Or amendment to the ordinance, I guess it would be?
Why would we go November 15th instead of November 1?
I don't know. It was just a date in there. We could, you know, go either. At one time, we were talking about December 1, but we felt that was too late. So that was somewhat of a compromise, but we could, you know, it does often snow here by November 1st.
Gary, what do you think?
I was part of the discussion, excuse me, President Decker and Commissioners. No, we, you know, we figured the, you know, end of September, in October, is when most people get prepared for winterization. And I think we just extended a couple weeks past the 1st of November. I don't think anything's concrete, it was just part of our discussion, to give them a couple more weeks. But sometimes it is nice in October, but I think either date would work.
Mr. President, are you ready for a motion?
Well, I think this has to come back as, this has to come back as a formal amendment to the ordinance. This is just a memo this evening.
If you liked the way it's written, you could approve it as the first reading, is that correct?
Well, we'd have to have a hearing the second, then the second reading.
Correct.
Correct, President Decker, Commissioners. I do have drafted it. It wasn't included in your packet. I didn't realize that Chief Dossinger didn't forward the actual ordinance, but the summary on the memo that was provided by Chief Dossinger is exactly as the ordinance is drafted. So I guess procedurally, if you feel comfortable with that, based on that representation, making a motion, if you're willing to move forward with that, to approve the first reading. And then, when we get back to the second reading, you will have the ordinance in that final form included in your packets for a public hearing, and then a final reading, if that's the direction the Commission chooses to go.
Mr. President, I'd make an amendment to make the starting date November 1.
Okay. Any further discussion on the date, if we amend it to November 1? Any concerns?
I have a question. Is 48 hours too short of a timeframe? Is it going to be enforced, or is it going to be one of those ordinances that people You know, you put in 48 hours, is it going to be enforced? Or do we need to extend that?
Well, my only concern is if, typically, we go out and police or Public Works, typically police, if they're alerted to a position like that, would orange tag them, right?
President Decker, that's correct, if I can speak for.
Yeah, so they would orange tag something and say it's orange-tagged on a Friday. Somebody's out of town, they can't respond to it over the weekend, because they are gone.
Right, or someone's on vacation for a week, they only have street parking. Because it does say, you know, a car in there, too, doesn't it? House car?
A lot of times, these are complaint-driven, and I believe the intent of this was, you know, in the ordinance itself, it has about vehicles in 48 hours. The intent of this one, I believe, was, you know, for the trailers, campers, those sort of things, that, you know, so we don't have the winter storage on the street. But a lot of them are complaint-driven, you know, if we see them, or if they get calls to Public Works or to police, then they go and give them the.
Just about everybody knows it's a 48-hour limit.
I believe so.
If you leave your car there on a Friday, and you're going to be back, you're under the understanding that if you get a ticket, you've got 48 hours. If you get a ticket after that, pay the ticket.
Any other questions or concerns? I know one of the concerns is 48 hours. Do we want to amend the 48 hours? Mr. Steiner has made the motion to amend this document to read November 1st. So would we want to switch possibly 72, or? I guess that's the next question.
So it's considered abandoned. Are we going to tow it after 48 hours, or just ticket it?
That's how it reads. That was my question.
Typically, I believe what has, it gets noticed and it gets ticketed, and then if they come back a period of time later, and it's not moved. And one thing we have to think here, this is not a car. Typically, these sit there, and you don't see any tracks at all around them. A car, sometimes, maybe it did move, and it's a little harder to tell. These are very easy to tell that they have not moved in months, so.
But this ordinance is, still applies, Section A applies to motor vehicles.
Right, but the difference is, a lot of times, like, a car may leave, there's a set of tracks out, so you don't know if it was 48 hours or not, but these, it's going to be pretty easy to tell.
Mayor Decker, if I could, for the Commission's thoughts, would it make sense to extend the parking duration during non-winter hours, whatever dates those are, for recreational vehicles, I'll call it, or trailers, to something more like a week? Because a lot of recreational, even two weeks, a lot of recreational vehicles, even if you're a camper and you go out every weekend, it probably sits from Monday to Friday. It would be four days for an active camper to probably park their fifth wheel. I don't know that. Or just go out and ticket those folks.
This is specifically during the months of November 1st to March 31st. So there would be no limits during the week, during the season.
Unless somebody wanted to really dive down in, and if you read into Section A where it says trailer.
We don't want to harass or get involved with anybody during the summer months and everything. If they need five, six, seven days to park in the street, I have no problem with that.
This is more for snow.
Yeah, this is just winter.
President, I think the amendment is the winter months. I guess that's, I think, kind of where we're going. And I guess if the Commission wants to change the whole ordinance to the 48 hours, and that would be an additional changes, if I'm correct, Attorney Winklevon. But that would, you know, if that's the discussion, then maybe we need to look at the whole section, not just the winter months, because we're just, at this point, just adding the winter months.
I just want to clarify, sorry, I'm speaking, that it's going to be enforceable. You know, is someone going to be, have their car towed after 48 hours, and then two blocks over, they're not? That's the whole point. I just want to make sure that it's easy to be enforced, and everything on is going to be true the same way.
Well, I think we've all seen vehicles orange-tagged down, and they've orange-tagged for.
Weeks.
Weeks, yes.
So. Normally, in my department, I'm not going to speak for the police, but you know, it's an issue, you know, when we start seeing weeds growing under the vehicles, you know, those are when we want to get to the maintenance of the streets and clean, and that's usually when it comes, or, you know, we can't get around them with piles of snow anymore, we need to get it cleaned up. And that's usually when, you know, we usually contact the Police Department, and they help us in those situations.
But obviously, those would be one in 48 hours.
Right.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Trustum.
Should we ask Captain Seeley on that question?
I think he's going to do the.
I tried to keep you back there, Joe.
He's going to do the patrolling himself, I've heard.
Okay, the 48-hour parking is something that is complaint-driven. During the summer months, without any snow on the ground or anything else, we have to base that on a complaint, have to mark the tire, come back, check in three days to make sure it's moved, unless there is a flat tire or something indicates that thing has been there for an extended period of time. I think the 48 hours is reasonable, just because it is complaint-driven, and the purpose of this ordinance is to actually get the path cleared for snow removal. So if we have vehicles sitting there for over 48 hours, that means the likelihood of the Public Works being able to actually clear that street properly, or creating a huge berm around it, which is a problem through the rest of the year when it freezes, we need to try to get the community to move their recreational vehicles, especially that aren't going to be used, they need to find proper storage. And by the time the officers actually sticker the vehicle, and it's not a high priority for them, so when they actually get back to checking on them, could be up to, you know, 10 days, two weeks, or forgotten until the next complaint comes in, so. And there is that musical cars, too, where they move them six inches, 12 inches, and they say they moved, or rip off the stickers and hope for the next officer.
Okay. I want to tell this story, and this might take care of your questions. In 1980, I was 23 years old, so I knew everything, right? And I had an old car. And I parked it on the street, and I didn't drive it, because I didn't need it. And I didn't have a driver, another driver, whatever, so I parked it on the street. Well, my neighbor didn't like it. He called and complained to the Police Department. And I got a call from the Police Chief, and he said, "We got a complaint, you got to move your car." And I was one of those that thought, "Well, I'll move it six inches." But I didn't. I says, "You mean, if I move it six inches, I'll be okay?" He says, "I'm telling you to move your car." I said, "Well, if you're saying I got to get six inches, and I'll be okay, I'm not moving it." Came back and worked the next day, my car was gone. And I thought, "That's great, they're going to store my car for about five days." to store my car for about five days on them." Like, I thought, "Well, I'll go out there and tear the bad we out of it and get everything out." Go out there. Here, the fire department had already used it for exercise. They clipped the sides off and peeled back the roof on it. So I don't, hey, 48 hours, 48 hours, there's a reason for that. You know, I learned the hard way. And so people complain and say, "Well, no, I don't feel sorry for them. There's reason for this here." And that's the last time I'm telling that story.
All right. Any other discussion or concerns, questions for staff on this parking ordinance? We can take a motion with the amended date to November 1. If there's any other questions or concerns, I guess the enforcement mechanism will be, as they can get to it, as we have heard. So, but it should be a priority in the wintertime, especially if it's plugging up our snow removal.
Mr. President, I'd move to amend that to November 1.
Okay, we have a motion to amend it to November 1, and is your motion also carry to approve it, the ordinance?
Yes.
Motion also to approve this amendment to the ordinance with an amendment of the date to November 1.
Second.
With a second. Any other discussion, questions, concerns? And this will be the first reading, and we will have a second reading with a public hearing. So if there are no other concerns or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into engineering. Mr. Kubis, you have a warranty deed for 8th Street and State Avenue Water Main right of way.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is a warranty deed for the Water Main project on South State Avenue. It does cross 8th Street as well. And last year, we negotiated, or we contracted with KLJ to negotiate and acquire right of way from three parcel, or three property owners along State Avenue. This is the second of two. This is for the Camp on the Hart, some property along Camp on the Hart from the Fisher Group. The offers made to the property owners were based on recent acquisition prices and assessed values. No appraisals were performed. So for this particular property, it was their assessed value minus the cost of improvements. There's a permanent structure on Camp on the Hart, so that value was removed from the land price minus unbuildable area, because this parcel includes quite a chunk of the Hart River. The property boundary actually goes to the middle of the river. So the acquisition price per square foot was based on assessed value minus the cost of the building, minus the cost of the land underneath the river. There was also a temporary construction easement, a small temporary construction easement on this parcel that was paid at one-half of the land price.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? There are no questions for Mr. Kubis. I'd look for a motion on this consideration to approve. Change it right away.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
For the second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into the timetable, and we have public hearings. This evening, we have a public hearing for amendment to the zoning ordinance, off-street parking, and that will be presented by City-County Planner Josephson.
Good evening, Mr. President. Commissioners, Steve Josephson, City-County Planner. What you have in front of you is a proposed amendment to Article 39.09, which is off-street parking. This is part of the, the Planning and Zoning Director Hadley and I are going through the zoning ordinance and looking at parts of it for updating, updating, updating parts of it. And this is a part of our update, of our update effort. In 30, the proposed changes to 3909 for off-street parking, among the changes would be that right now, required parking would, in the case where it says the number of spaces will be based on gross square footage, gross square footage of a building, it would change from gross square footage to net square footage. So that would exclude some areas that are currently counted, closet areas, restrooms, cooking areas, and so on. There are the areas in a building that aren't necessarily used by the general, by the general public. The, let me back up a little bit. The idea is to, this is part of a nationwide effort at looking at parking required minimum parking standards. And in Dickinson, as well as in a number of other cities, these standards were set decades ago and have been found that oftentimes, these are more than the actual space that's needed for developers and for stores when they are developed. And also, it can cost, it can delay or kill projects because the developer would be interested, you know, is responsible for providing more space than they actually need. And also can take away options of developing a parcel because areas that would be, could be developed for something else or would be, would have to be used for parking. Or in some cases, if developers expand the building, they would tear down, you know, perfectly good buildings in order to accommodate these minimum, these required minimums. So having gone with that explanation, this is why this is coming in front of you, is to allow for development with fewer parking, with the opportunity to reduce those required minimums. And as I said, this is part of a nationwide process. This is taking place in cities all over, all over the United States. The city actually right now has, you know, has a requirement in the downtown commercial area, or it doesn't require off-street parking. This is taking it a little bit further. So one of the things it would do is it would, it would, the net floor, it would use net floor area for square footage instead of gross floor area. It would also allow for city staff to administratively reduce required off-street parking spaces if the request is no more than 25 spaces or 25% of the required spaces. And an applicant would, they would apply to the city and they would provide an explanation for why they, why the reduction should occur. Under the, under those two, those criteria, the city staff would be able to administratively, if they agreed with those, they'd be able to administratively reduce it. Any requests greater than those thresholds would be heard by the Board of Adjustment. And also, there's additional text updating non-residential parking on remote spots. The Planning and Zoning Commission, the city staff recommended approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with some changes, the reductions, the staff had recommended that those go to Planning and Zoning Commission, and they would, they would make those approvals. Planning and Zoning Commission felt that that process is more appropriate, should more appropriately be handled by the Board of Adjustment. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about these, this proposed amendment to the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And also, if Planning and Zoning Director Hadley wishes to add anything at this point, I would ask that he share that with the, with the City Commission.
All right, thanks, Stephen. The only thing I had to add to the, for the commission is that at the public hearing, there wasn't any opposition. We have gone out into the public and presented this idea to engineers, developers, designers, and it met with favorable responses. And this would be first reading of ordinance 1687.
The other thing I would add to is this applies primarily to commercial and industrial, you know, minimum parking standards.
Any questions for Mr. Josephson or Mr. Hadley on this ordinance 1687 and its amendments? Any questions?
Just, I have one here. 39.09.002 general applications. All off-street parking spaces and all driveways on private property leading to such parking areas shall be paved. So if I have a spot on the side of my house, and I pack my boat or camper up on there and I've just got gravel down, that's not...
This would apply just to commercial, and we can clarify that.
But what you're talking about, Commissioner Frederick, is correct. You can't, years ago, we got away from, when there was a lot of people from out of town working here that pull right up onto the lawns and park. We established an ordinance that said there's got to be a concrete there or blocks there or something, because people are just driving up on those places, just parking.
But I, Commissioner Frederick's argument, I know many people that have very large lots that have, let's say, a side garage, and they have the space that they can pull their camper up beside that garage. And it's not necessarily on paved or concrete. It's sitting there on their property beside their garage.
Yeah, the ordinance does say it should. You can put square pavers down, and your four tires could be on those four pavers, but that's, it was a problem back then with neighbors complaining about neighbors parking on my lawn and driving up over it. Fine, you want to park on the side of your home, you put down pavement. That was really the reason for it.
I guess I would read it the same way. I think he's interpreting it is that it needs to be paved or solid concrete.
Shall be paved. And then, if you read farther down what pavement is, it's asphalt or concrete or...
So my concern...
Are we enforcing this? Because there's a lot of people that park on their side of their garages with old concrete down. Has this always been like this? Mr. Steiner's saying it has been, but...
It's been a lot of years it's been on there.
I don't know if we have enforcement.
Go up 10th Avenue West, that's the corner there, and 17th, you'll see one.
We're getting head shakes from the back. We don't have the amount of people need to enforce this. I totally agree with the reduction in space. My only question was going to be, are we going to send notification out to the existing commercial entities such as the mall or Walmart that we're not requiring anymore you to have X amount of space? Because we are shrinking, or you can apply to be administratively, you know, changed?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. President, how it would work for existing is that they would come in and if they had a proposal to add new property, add new buildings, add something on there, what we would probably do is just tell them, use the mall as an example, that they had adequate parking. We would just allocate the parking that they have there for their new uses, and we could probably do that for a number of new uses at the mall right now.
I was just, you know, for examples, I know what the mall did here and their, on their east side, you know, there's potential for the west side for them. You look at the Kirkwood Mall in Bismarck, they have multiple restaurants that just popped up that what used to be parking lot that never was used as a parking lot. Even Walmart, it would have the opportunity if they not, they deemed it necessary, they didn't need all that parking, that somebody could throw something up on a corner. That would be administratively, they'd be able to come in, and if it's more than 25%, then it would go to the Board of Adjustments. But they would be, so they would be noticed that, okay, your parking lot doesn't have to be this big anymore.
Correct. And I think, and I believe most of the design and design professionals in town are aware of this as well. So when people go to them to do an amendment, they would be aware of it.
Now, back to the original Commissioner Frederick's point of the paved beside these, say, garages or beside a house on a large lot where somebody's pulling a fifth wheeler in or possibly a boat or even a car.
That's a whole different ordinance.
Well, that's in here, though. That's 39.09.002.
This is the off-street parking ordinance.
Yeah.
And there's nothing that indicates it's commercial.
Right. There's nothing that, yeah, this is a house.
We can clarify, we can make that, I will get with Planning and Zoning Director Hadley afterwards, and we'll look, we'll look at the language. And if it needs to be, and if it needs to be clarified or changed between now and the next, and the next, the second reading will take care of that.
My only other question, I see a lot of the ordinances now that we're changing it to, we're taking away some positions and always putting city administrator or designate. So do we actually designate who takes care of some of this stuff? Because I'm doubting that you're going to be talking about the landscaping requirements to every applicant that comes in.
And that's why you put it that way, is that we know that there's staff that deals with that in particular. But, you know, in planning and zoning, it might be Stephen one day, it might be Walter one day, depending on who's here. So that's very general language that's used.
Mr. President, if I could clarify, what would be your intent? And, Mr. Frederick, what would be the intent that we'd want to come back with to address that side parking? Are we okay with it? Or without the hard surface? Or... Just so we bring back something that reflects what you want to do.
Mr. President, my question would be, why is this change being adjusted?
I don't believe that part of it, Stephen. Could you clarify that? I believe that that's been something that we've been following for a number of years.
But...
Where it's, it's included in here as an addition, so where was that? I'm not seeing that anywhere within the edits made. I'm not seeing it processed. This is an addition
You know, and it does show up else, it does show up elsewhere. This does show up elsewhere. It actually does show up elsewhere in the, in the ordinance, but it's under, it's under commercial. It's under non-residential. It's under commercial, you know, properties. So if it's a duplication, you know, if it's a, it's a duplication, we can always remove that. And that may be the best way to address it.
So is the building department the one that's, does this, goes around and determines this? I mean, they're the ones that do code compliance. Mr. Schwent?
I believe, I believe Mr. Schwent is the one that follows up with this.
So are we telling people they can't park their camper on gravel on the side of their house? Or their boat?
If you look at 39.09.008, it does have in Section 4, parking spaces provided on paved, gravel, scorched, or rock surface.
On the residential.
Right.
President Decker, Commissioners, again, this is another complaint-driven enforcement. We don't mandate that you actually pave next to the garage. A lot of people want to do that to dress up their property, and then we limit how much concrete actually goes in. We have a lot of properties that have an extra lot, and the wording in here, which was brought up in Planning and Zoning, is if you have that lot, you're parking your camper, your boat, now we're going to have another driveway leading to that parking spot. I don't think that's the intent of this. And, but you could actually read that and think that's, that's what we're asking for. But as far as going out and mandating that people pave where they're parking, especially in the rear yard, again, we don't have the staff. We're not chasing things that we really can enforce.
Well, and to that point, I know this came up in, in Planning and Zoning, was there's also, if you go to 39.09.009, we're saying that you cannot store more than one unlicensed or unregistered motor vehicle in a fully enclosed garage. Who's going to enforce that? Unless, again, it's complaint driven.
I think it's outside of a camper's garage. So I mean, it's an exterior storage.
Well, this says, "A storage of no more than one unlicensed or unregistered motor vehicle in a fully enclosed garage."
In, not out.
In.
Since I've been with the city of Dickinson, I don't believe I've ever tried to enforce that.
You know, the next line is, "Or in a fenced or screened area." Okay, that's inside the fence. I can understand that. If it's a nuisance and you have a vehicle out there and... I can understand that if it's a nuisance and you have a vehicle out there and I know a vehicle within the city that there's a tree growing through it, so yes, that probably... Again, what are we doing to enforce this, this ordinance? So I, you know, before we had two, again, I don't think anybody was checking two because the line, it's lined out two and now it's one. So, I mean, some of this is, it's unenforceable.
Correct.
Ninety percent of our ordinances are complaint-driven.
Right. Well, they have to be, so... But, you know, back to the parking beside, I think if somebody has a camper, and to your original intent, Mr. Steiner, was we didn't want people and campers living beside a garage, living in that camper.
Well, that plus, in a neighborhood, I'm guessing that you can have a camper alongside your garage, but it should look neat. And I think that's where they came up with the gravel down or the rock down.
Yeah.
If you don't do that, it sits there and you got nothing but grass and weeds growing, you don't mow around it, now you got a neighbor that's not happy with it. And that's where the complaints come in.
Yes. Our paved parking, generally, you're required to have, on a single-family house, two off-street parking. And the ordinance, I believe, reads outside of an enclosed structure. We do get those complaints about people parking in front of their front living room window and we do enforce those, that they have to be on that paved surface that is
Mr. President, make sure I could...
Mr. Kubis.
On the Section 09.002, I do think, and Mr. Josephson touched on it, if we just make clear that that's applying to commercial properties, I think that, in my mind, I was a little confused at the last Planning and Zoning meeting, too. I think that clears up a lot of the issues. So someone with a residential off-street parking can probably continue to do the gravel as long as it's maintained and this would apply to commercial parking only.
Right.
Because it's even saying we can't have unlicensed vehicles, the same vehicles that we asked people to move off the street a half an hour ago. So I think if it applies to commercial only, it would make a lot, a lot of sense. And I'm sure that was the intent, so...
That's the intent.
Sure. Jump into the water.
The prohibited storage that they're talking about for motor, specifically for motor vehicles on our end, it's a green sticker we use opposed to the orange stickers for the 48-hour parking vehicles and it specifically says that it's gotta be an unlicensed, unregistered motor vehicle that's being stored. We actually have to give the property owner written notification, giving them so much time to take care of the vehicle before we can take any action on their property. So that's the police department's portion of the storage that helps.
But again, you're not going in people's garages looking for unlicensed motor vehicles.
It's specifically, on our sticker, that specifically says, "The owner of the property shall not cause storage of vehicles not having current registration and current properly displayed license plates or inoperable motor vehicles within a residential area unless in a fenced or fully enclosed garage hidden from the view of public street." We specifically use vehicles, nothing to do with chambers or boats, but I don't know what quote in person says.
So why don't you...my suggestion would be that you make these changes and bring this back to us so that we can have some clarification before we move on any of this.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. So do you wanna table this for the...
Well, yes, let's...I mean, that would, if the commission would like to do that, we'll table it.
Okay.
Okay, can I get a motion to table this?
It's just so confusing because you start up here and it doesn't say it's commercial. It just says off-street parking and then you go down and then all of a sudden it talks about residential parking, way down at the bottom. So, I mean, it's like, it's almost like it's laid out funny. I mean, it should be, one section should be commercial, one section should be residential. And the general applications shouldn't just be for commercial, that should be just like general terms for both. I mean, I just think it's not laid out very well.
So I'd look for a motion to table ordinance 1687.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor, well, excuse me, we have a motion to approve our table ordinance 1687 with a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing done. All in favor of tabling ordinance 1687, state aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Joseph, oh, this will be solely Planning Director Hadley for a public hearing for a rezone of Lot 1B Block 1, the Come and Go Edition.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is the first reading for zone change by TCB Rentals, zone change from for Lot 1B Block 1 Come and Go Edition, from community commercial and R1 residential to general commercial. This was at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. As you can see on the map on the board there, it's the area highlighted in yellow. The existing Come and Go gas station is just to the west or to the left, if you're looking at one, left side of the lot. Their intent is to develop it in a general commercial fashion. If this area is a one spot of zoning that doesn't comply with the rest of the whole I-94 business loop from this point all the way to the interstate, both sides are zone general commercial all the way out, this request has some history, came through in 2013, I believe, to the City Commission and Planning Commission, a little bit of a controversy. They wanted to put a truck stop there at the time. In 2016, it came back to the Commission again, not to the Commission, came back to the Planning Commission again, received a favorable recommendation and didn't ever move forward because the applicant that was going to develop it backed out. So at this time, they're back with this request, which does leave some residential. You can see that top portion or top lot to the north, the top part of the page, which buffers the residential area to the north with single-family residential still. As I said, it was heard at the January Planning Commission meeting, there were no opposition at that. Staff and the Planning Commission would both recommend approval of ordinance 1688 if we're keeping in sequence with the numbers or if we're not, then 1687. I'll leave that to Ms. Winko.
Mr. President, considering the Commission did not act on the prior ordinance, I would not recommend that that be given a number just yet, so this one would be 1687.
Okay. So this will be 1687. Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on the rezone for what is called the Come and Go Edition? Many of us know it now as a Lucky's, I think is sitting there in the corner, so, but this is still what this addition is called, the Come and Go Edition. So any questions, Mr. Hadley or staff on this rezone? Hearing done, we'll go into a public hearing and I'll open up the public hearing if there are any citizens with any concerns about the rezone of this Come and Go Edition. Please come forward, state your name and let us know your concerns. Any concerns with the rezone? Anyone from the public with any concerns on ordinance 1687 and the rezone of the Come and Go Edition? Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or comments for staff? There are no questions or comments for staff, I'd look for a motion on ordinance 1687.
Mr. President, I would to approve ordinance 1687.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing done, we'll vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on ordinance 1687. That is the end of the public hearing. We'll move back into public, I guess, into engineering. And, Mr. Kubis, you have a Dickinson Hills Fairway Street bid.
I do. Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. You had a teaser for this at the State of the City, so I thought there'd be a bunch more people here for it. So on Tuesday, January 28th, here at City Hall, we opened bids for the Fairway Street Improvement Project in conjunction with the Dickinson Hills subdivision. In an effort to obtain better unit pricing, we had put two bid schedules together. Bid Schedule 1 was all the Fairway Street improvements, the city has made a pledge to commit dollars towards. And bid Schedule 3 is just street improvements out on the business loop. Obviously, similar work types out there with gravel and asphalt and the like. So those two schedules were bid together, but the costs were separated out. I think we did achieve some success in bidding those together, also bidding them at a better time of the year in January. And then we made some revisions with their developers' engineers to some of the bid items. So the actual bid for Fairway Street came down from last July, which was $1.848 million. And when we bid it here last week, it was $1.475 million. So we do believe we had some success rebidding this project. The total bid with the schedules added together was $2,290,000. The low bid for the project was BK. We also had a second bidder on this project, which always gives you some level of comfort that you're getting an actual true low bid, and that second bidder was Northern Improvement. We've had Apex, who's been working on this project with the city since last year, reviewed those bids and their letter, which is in your packet, recommends that the City Commission accept the low bid from BK Consulting, and that bid being $2,29,000, excuse me, $2,29,948.85. Before anything could be awarded, we obviously have a third private party that would need to commit some funds to this to meet the, or fulfill the obligation of the development agreement we have with Dickinson Hills. So like I said, Apex has reviewed this, staff has reviewed this, and we would recommend accepting the low bid of BK.
Mr. Kubis, our commitment, and Mrs. Carlson, you can verify this, I think our original commitment was 1.37 million or 1.38?
I believe it was 1.376.
Okay. So this is roughly $100,000 over what we've committed and to your point, then, that discussion will have to happen with the developer about that money. One interesting thing within this bid, if you look at it, is there's an option, instead of asphalt, to go to concrete, which would push it up about $38,000, roughly. Instead of asphalt, you use concrete. And, I mean, I know we're just in the initial approved bid and then there'll be further discussions, but that's something to consider, too, Commissioners, that if we go forward with this project, that we possibly go with the concrete over the asphalt. And I guess I'd also like to hear from Public Works, because ultimately, you're going to be taking care of it as in street maintenance. And I think concrete, for the long term, is a better value, unless...
President Decker and Commissioner, no, you're right. Concrete is made to last longer than a pavement surface and Engineer Kubez can attest to that. As long as we make sure that the construction is done correctly and the compaction is done, I would agree that concrete would probably be the way to go if possible. I do wanna say, too, that, you know, from the 1.376 to the 1.475, you know, that's less than about 8%. So if you look at it that way, a bid came in about 8% over what we projected. And in two years, that's not, a year, that's not too bad at all. But I would agree that the concrete, if everybody agreed, would probably be the way to go for that price difference. I think you're getting more bang for your buck with that price difference.
I believe that to be true as well. And if we remember, in another timeframe, there was another half-section development proposed beyond this stretch of Fairway Street. And Fairway Street would be, I would say, by far the main entrance into that development if things were to ramp up and continue developing west in Dickinson. A concrete street might be a valuable asset to have there with a lot of traffic potentially using Fairway Street in future.
So any other questions or comments? I think what Mr. Kubis was looking for right now is that we motion to either accept or deny this bid and then move forward with the discussions with the developer from there.
Mr. President, will we approve that bid?
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing done. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then, Mr. Kubis, you have a couple of reports.
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. The first report is a request from the Engineering Department to issue an RFP for design engineering of Fourth Avenue East and also for a transportation master plan update. Both of these would be run through the DOT process. The Fourth Avenue East project is north of 21st Street. We specifically excluded it from our Mill and Overlay project, even though it's in that same neighborhood, because this Fourth Avenue East, this section, is on our federal aid system. So we'd like to use that 80/20 federal dollars that we would match 20% locally. We've done this, you know, many, many times before. This project is on the 2021, I wanna say that right, excuse me, it's on the 2022 CIP schedule. So it wouldn't happen, construction wouldn't happen for quite a few years, but these projects do take a while to design. This way, we would have, I think, a pretty friendly schedule for the design, hopefully securing a better price for that design, not trying to really put all the DOT components of that design and cramming them into eight months. The second project is something we've talked about in the past. The DOT just sent me an email reminding me that they have this master planning, they call it regional planning dollars, that are still available. There's not necessarily a competitive process to get this grant money awarded. Again, it's 80/20 dollars that the city could use to update the transportation master plan. And the transportation master plan was started, I wanna say, back in 2011. It's been quite a while. So we went on quite a wild ride in those nine years since we started that plan. I think the plan was completed in '13, so it's been seven years since it's been completed. We've done some small traffic studies back in 2017, but this would really update the entire transportation master plan. I think we could drill down a little bit deeper into where we want some of these corridors on the perimeter of the city, or not. Like we heard today, that maybe that's not the most efficient infrastructure, but back when this plan was put together, we were talking bypasses in all four quadrants of the city, developing every section line road in the ETZ. So, you know, here's a different economic time and maybe it's a good time to relook at the transportation master plan. In visiting with the DOT, they feel a lot of plans like these, where it's an update to an existing plan, can be completed for $250,000, $300,000. That would leave our local match at, you know, 50,000 to 60,000, 50,000 to 65,000. It's certainly not imperative that we do this project right now. Planning studies can sometimes just lead to more planning studies, but I do think an update is probably applicable at this time for the City of Dickinson. If you remember, too, the first transportation plan that we did really grew and spawned into the comprehensive plan that we also completed in 2013. So there might be some synergies for looking for some other planning dollars to update that study, which is, again, seven years old and completed in a much different economic time. With that, I'd open it up, any questions you might have about either one of these two projects?
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on the RFPs?
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on the RFPs for the design engineering of fourth or the transportation master study? And this is just a report, so this will be something we'll probably see in the near future.
Yeah, it's a report. You know, it would have been a good work session item, but we had a pretty full work session. So we'd like to bring forward those RFPs if there's no absolute dissent against doing that, so.
I appreciate your honesty, too, about studies. Sometimes just we get more studies.
They can't. I mean, it's, planners can plan. No offense, planners. They're very good at what they do. But these have been very good, I think beneficial to the city, both the transportation plan...
I think they have to.
Or they lead to some real, you know, glaring needs that maybe we weren't seeing before.
Mrs. Trustum?
Mr. Kubis, could you send us a copy of that master transportation plan?
Yeah, absolutely. Digitally, it might be a little bit big, but we can certainly get hard copies of it.
Okay.
I think that's, you knocked the dust off of it wherever you're storing it, so.
It's good size, master plan.
I don't know that we've re, I can't recall reviewing it.
Well, it came out in 2013. It was right when I got on the commission in 2014. So I don't know if anybody besides myself and Mr. Steiner, we probably have to knock the dust off of ours, since he uses his. So it's probably somewhere in the closet that...
Yeah, we could certainly get some fresh copies.
Or maybe even just a synopsis of it. I think it's interesting information, so.
Certainly. We'll do that.
Then you have another report, Mr. Kubis, a special assessment for service line improvements?
I do. And I apologize for the lack of a memo there. But this was a request that we had gotten from a private property owner in town, who, when he purchased property here this last year in 2019, found out it had a damaged sewer service line. Not a lot of records to go with what the damage was, but he certainly spent a lot of money to fix his sewer line. And we don't have a process, we get asked quite a bit, but we don't have an assessment process. Other cities, Bismarck has a process, where if you have to go in as a landowner and repair or replace your sewer service line, they put some or maybe all of that onto a special assessment. Kind of a voluntary program. If you want to just pay it, that's fine. If you'd like to special assess it, the city could step in and pay that upfront and get paid back on it. So this is not a new request. We do have a form filled out that, it's been in the city attorney's office, not Ms. Whitegoes, but in the Dickinson city attorney's office. To my experience, we've never used that petition for special assessment, but it's available, it's out there. Maybe it was gathered from Bismarck, I'm not even sure. So the question is really, do we want to entertain this as something that the city would consider special assessing for a private landlord to replace their service lines?
Why couldn't we treat it like our concrete sidewalk plan and give it a 10-year payback or five-year payback or whatever, I mean?
I think we could. And I was just going to add to that. If you remember, about five years ago, I don't know the exact date, but during a budgeting session, we used to have a fund that was called the Sewer Backup Fund, and where we would pay out up to, I think, $10,000 if someone experienced some, experienced problems in their home due to a sewer backup. We abolished that fund about five years ago. And that was just a payout. There was no payback to the city, where if we would do something like this, it would be a payout initially, payback over, like Commissioner Steiner said, up to a 10-year term, something like that.
So we, somebody applied, does the city have to get involved with the contractor in the bidding of the project? Or would the customer just bring in an estimate and say this is what it's going to cost and...
I would have to think through a couple of those details. I would say, no, we wouldn't have to get involved in bidding, because it'd be, unless they has a gigantic sewer line, it would be less than our bidding threshold. We'd certainly want to inspect the work that's done out in the right-of-way, which we usually do with city staff anyway. So there really wouldn't be additional cost. If these folks are, you know, on this particular one, that didn't get special assessed, our staff was out there inspecting the work being done, so.
So the application process would be fill this out and bring a bid in, so we know what it's going to, they're asking for the assessment?
I would, I would say so. The only other criteria that I can think of off the top of my head would be that they would need to be an approved city excavator.
Sure. Okay. I think it's a great program. There's a lot of these old neighborhoods that have collapsed sewer lines or ones with tree roots in them, or I think people would be something to look at for sure. And I think the city would like them improved at some point, too, so.
They have, they have to be, yeah. Or the properties with sewer. So we can come back with, I guess, Ms. Whitego, maybe ordinance change. I don't know if the ordinance specifically speaks to doing this type of assessment, but at a minimum, a resolution?
Correct, Mr. Kubis, Mr. President Commissioners. Specifically, in researching this in light of the meeting, the city's code regarding sewer has a very specific ordinance that allows for sewer assessments to be special assessed against the property. There is no reciprocal ordinance for street maintenance. So I think we can do it one of two ways. If the city wants it more solidified, we can certainly do an ordinance, or we could draft a resolution as a policy, so to speak, and then implement those requirements within the policy. So I think between myself and Mr. Kubis, we can figure out what's the best mechanism and then present those options to the commission.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kubis. We'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Zurov, you have a recollect master service agreement renewal?
Yes. You probably don't know the name recollect, but it's the Dickinson Works app that is available to the public. And this agreement continues the Dickinson Works notification application. It's a three-year contract. And just to update, the application does notify property owners by their choice of text, email, or phone call. The notifications include your trash collection and your recycle collection day. It's been very valuable, especially now that recycling is, is part of our collection. As the other, every other week, it helps me when it's due. The application also has the ability to send alerts to the property owners, which has been useful in water breaks and in certain snow events. We've used this application. It also includes a waste wizard search bar that you can search a particular item, whether it's recyclable or not. And I think that gets used quite often also. To date, we have 2,803 residents enrolled for this. Last year at this time, we had about 1,800 enrolled. So it continues to be a popular application and increases daily for this application. Signing up is very easy. I know this is sounding like a commercial, but I want to get more people signed up by just calling the Public Works help desk at 701-456-7979. Public Works staff recommends approval of this agreement. It is a three-year agreement for $8,588.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this agreement with recollect? And you said it was, it was 8,000, right, mister?
Yeah, it's...
8,588?
8,588. The last time, three years ago, or when we first had the agreement, it was 8,394. It has gone up, not even $200, $100 and maybe dollars.
And that's for a three-year subscription basis?
Yep, yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Zurov on this? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on this master service agreement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Zurov, you have a lead and copper rule proposed changes.
Yes. Thank you, President Decr and Commissioner. EPA published their proposed lead and copper rule, and comments are due February, they extended comments, which are due February 12th, 2020. And so I'm bringing it to commission tonight. I did enclose a draft letter that was compiled by the North Dakota Water Systems, Minot, Bismarck, Dickinson, and a couple other cities made comments to, and closing the letter, and also working with Lake at the League of Cities. The proposed EPA lead and copper rule will place significant liabilities, responsibilities, and cost to the utilities for the infrastructure they don't own. Currently, we do test for lead and copper. I can't remember exactly when that rule went into effect, quite a few years ago. I was taking lead and copper samples myself at one point. And Dickinson has not had any significant problems with lead and copper. It is tested by the property owners after the water sits for six to eight hours. The new rule puts more responsibility on the utility to be responsible for the premise plumbing and water fountains, things like that, that utilities throughout the state and the nation don't feel that utilities should have to be responsible for. And that's a significant concern by the new lead and copper rule, that once it passes the city's public mains and services, our water chemistry is fine. And beyond that, it becomes a private issue, is what the water utilities feel. As in the memo, the current, water facilities have a current and huge level of responsibility already, providing the needed water quality and quantity to every water user within our community at affordable cost. This proposed rule makes it the responsibility of the water utility to regulate private premise plumbing and any related fixtures and filtration devices. So League of Cities and utilities have put together a letter. I'm expecting that soon, that we're asking the support of the commission and the commission and the city of Dickinson to sign a letter of support on our comments with regard to the lead and copper rule. I do want to say, in, you know, we, the Public Works Department is in charge of the distribution system. We do not run the water plant here. But most water plants, including Southwest Water Plant, they do include carbon for pH control and also tri poly phosphate for corrosion control. And with those controls themselves for the water supply, you don't see the effects of lead in lead service lines or mains. That helps the corrosion of pH, the tri poly phosphate puts a film on the system that helps, that so it doesn't draw the lead from the lead lines. But we feel we're responsible for our system, not any premise plumbing and things like that. I do want to say, some of the new rule also talks about if you don't know what the let's, or what the service line is, that it is, you assume that it's a lead line. Most cities in the state are responsible either from the main, or, you know, from the main, that's the end of the responsibility, or to the curb stop. There's no utility within the state that is responsible for the, from the curb stop, in other words, end of the right-of-way to the house. And so that's going to be a difficult to, if it's assumed lead that has to be replaced, how are we going to deal with private, or property owners? That brings up even the question that we just talked about with the service line. To identify that and then require all residences to replace their line from the curb stop again, it's an expense that we don't feel we should be responsible for.
So this letter here, this is just a comment. You're going to have an official letter?
Well, that's, as far as it got, that's the draft.
Okay. So, once you have the finalized, you bring it to us for, to approve, and then I'll sign it?
Right. And that's, and, you know, it has to be due by the 12th. That's why I didn't give you a final copy. Michelle Close with the city of Bismarck was waiting for some of the League of Cities' responses. There's kind of two letters we're trying to, or two responses we're trying to compile. But they all pretty much have the similar comments on that about the responsibilities for the water utilities, and that we shouldn't be responsible for interior plumbing in private areas.
I don't even think we have the enforcement mechanism to go house to house and check.
Well, and that's it, too. Even in reading through the Federal Register, which is, I forgot how fun that was to read through. But it does also put requirements of the water utility to take samples at water fountains, in schools, and daycares. We feel that that's great to monitor your lead levels, but we don't feel that's responsible of the water utility. The water utility did not put in the plumbing, did not put in the water fountain, did not put in the filtration. We feel that's more of the school's responsibility, the health department, or EPA, they call them the circuit writers, you know, somebody in that regard, that we feel that's out of the water utility's responsibility.
And down to the daycares, that should just be part of the licensing process. If they're going to be licensed, they should have to provide that they're providing clean drinking water when they get licensed.
One thing that's interesting, too, in this regulation, it says licensed and unlicensed daycares. How in God's green earth is a water utility supposed to regulate unlicensed daycares?
Well, you'll get right on it. I'm sure you will.
Sounds like we need to approve this, because...
Yeah. If the date is the 12th, is there any concerns on any of the language in here? If it's, once Mrs. Zurov gets the formalized letter, if you're okay with giving me permission to sign it as, sign off for the commission, that once the formalized letter is, is ready to go, so.
I don't have an issue.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion then on the letter as the language stands right now.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
You, Mrs. Zurov. We have nothing from planning, nothing from building this evening. And we'll move on to public issues of city concerns, not on the agenda. If you're a citizen of Dickinson and you have any public issues of city concern that weren't on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concern. Anyone with any issue not on the agenda? Anyone with any public issue of city concern not on our agenda, please step forward. Seeing no one has any issues not on the agenda, we'll close the public forum for that item. Commissioners, is there anything that wasn't on the agenda this evening that you would like to discuss?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Mrs. Trustum?
And this may be more for Mr. Goff. Today in our state of the city, we got a brief update on the downtown square. Can you just provide us an update on where that process is and who's involved in those conversations with JLG?
Yes. As a matter of fact, JLG will be here this week to kind of go over, the instructions have been make site A fit on that site. So looking at that, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's likely going to be here to the commission to review at the February work session.
I don't know. I think it would, might be helpful to have one or two commissioners at some of those meetings, just with the background that we have of that project. I think it might be beneficial.
What day is that?
It might be tomorrow.
And was this to discuss changes?
No. They, it's, it's looking at going through the site and what all, yes, it's tomorrow at 1:00.
Would there be any commissioners that would be willing to be part of that?
I can't make that tomorrow.
You can't?
No.
Walla can't?
I can be there. I might, I would potentially be a little late.
Okay. It's my office.
Steiner or, nope. Okay. I will, I can check my... Okay, I will, I didn't check my, I will check quick. I think we'll be able to make that. Tomorrow, I should be able to make it also, so we at least have two commissioners there just to go through that. Any other items, commissioners, that you wish to bring up?
I just have one thing. A county commissioner approached me about the weed spraying and what our plan is, because they're telling us that we haven't done it for two years, and that if we don't do it, state ordinance says that they have to do it, and they need to know what our plan is because they need to hire people if we're not going to do anything.
Yeah, that, one of the things that, that happened when we had a staff member retire, and as a matter of fact, one of those county staff members called over the other day and asked if Mr. Zurov and I would sit down. It's not our weeds that are sprayed, it's if your neighbor has noxious weeds and you call it in. If you don't have an organized weed board, which we haven't here, had here for years, then technically, we can't enforce it, it's up to the county.
The understanding I, the understanding I got is that we used to pay them $50,000 a year to take care of it, and we haven't done that for the last two years. We took it over, but we haven't sprayed any weeds either, is my understanding. This is what I'm getting from this commissioner.
Yeah, and, and that's not our understanding, but.
Commissioner Frederick, no, we, we have taken over spraying. When we quit paying the county, the city took back control of our spraying for the city.
On our properties?
On our properties.
But we're being reported to the state board.
There's a, in the city jurisdiction versus the city spraying. We, we had paid the, the county to spray for weeds for the, for the city. The city has now taken over that weed spraying, and then it's a jurisdiction thing. If, if we have jurisdiction on weed control within the city limits, then we have to have our own weed board, my understanding. But that's not the, you know, if we don't, then the county's still responsible for weeds within the city. But the city's properties, we are taking care of the city's properties. But Joe, excuse me, city administrator, Gah, is correct. I got a call last week from Mr. Heiser, they wanted us maybe to attend a weed board. We wanted more discussion, in fact, I see I have a voicemail. The plan was to meet either with Mr. Heiser and a commissioner yet this week to discuss the, I think there's some misinformation, misunderstanding in kind of what's going on, but hopefully we'll get down to the, to the bottom of it.
All right. Well, I, I was contacted last summer by a commissioner also with concern of, and of, because there were weeds within his district, which is his commission, county commission district, which was in, in the city limits. And he sent me a picture, and I think I've, I've told Mr. Gah about that property. It's that parking lot that's across from the college that used to be a trailer park. It's now a parking lot over by Mandy's Bagels, back behind the big shop there. There's that huge parking lot, it used to be a trailer park, and the weeds are encroaching in, from Burlington Northern in towards us. And his, that was his concern at the time, the commissioner's concern was, what are we doing about this? And I think that's ultimately what led to them turning us into the state board.
Yeah, because we, we handle that as a codes enforcement issue, not a, we don't have a separate weed board that handles that, it's a administrative codes issue.
Was it ever taken care of?
If we get, there, again, we've heard this a lot, complaints driven. If they, if they have contacted us, we looked at it.
Well, I would take a county commissioner making us aware of it as a contact, as a complaint, so. I guess I'll drive by and see if we took care of it, I know where it's at, so.
Hearing nothing else from the commission, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.